Good morning.
Good morning.
Good dinner last night. All right, next. So this one, what I want to go over was, well, what we're going to plan to do, what's coming here? Our big projects. That will be public safety model assessment, implementation, procedures, department policy and procedures, review and update. And the north and with you guys, the North Carolina law enforcement accreditation and a fire preparedness assessment. That's what our goals are for this year. Ultimately. We're kind of entering the new era of public safety. The last six to eight months, we have one new lieutenant promotion, three sergeant promotions, new chief and a new deputy chief and we're working on that. So we got a whole new leadership, pretty much, of public safety. And as part of that, we want to spend this year working on the fundamentals, the base of public safety and expand from there. We want to get everything right on the ground level first and then start working. Karen, I don't know if this is any work. As far as the public safety model assessment, but what I want to caution is sometimes we've, we've already, me and Chris have already faced this a little bit when we talked about the whole safety model assessment. We're not splitting public safety. It is not getting split. That it's not in the picture, that's not in the plans, anything like that. But over the years, there has been some areas of public safety that have, we've been able to identify things that we need to work on inside that model. So we're going to spend the next year looking over the, the model, figuring out exactly where our areas are that we need to work on. Research possible solutions to fix those problems. And what I'd like to do is develop a strategic plan for public safety, where we're going to go five year throughout this year, starting with fiscal year and then sit next, next. So just kind of spending this year figuring everything out and then how we're going to implement that, starting and what, what that looks like as far as costs, how, how we get there. And then obviously presented Chris and Jay and then to you guys, this is our, this is our plan. This is where we like to be. What's your input? And part of that whole, the strategic plan is like you saying with the volunteer, like getting, what do they want out of us? What does the community want out of us versus just what we want to do? So why isn't it, we got ongoing recruitment issues. We've been down some positions for a while now. We are currently down four positions on shift, one on each shift. So supposed to be at six per shift, we're at five per shift. A lot of those issues are coming down to, it is extremely hard now. Emergency services and general space and staffing shortage, but it's extremely hard to get people who want to do all through. And part of that public safety model assessment is looking at that is, are we at a point where we should look at at changing that requirement and using people for their strengths and having a common certificate? We know that if there's a fire on our, we need all hands on deck. That's going to be a common certification. Everybody's going to have it, but do they need to have? Can we bring in law enforcement officers to do primarily law enforcement activities that have that experience and that knowledge? And then they help, you know, they're, they're also firefighters. But did they really need to be an EMT too? When we have a lot of medics and the fire medics as well, we'll bring in fire medics. Do they really need to do law enforcement if, if it's not there for them? Because what we've identified is we're not strong in all three. It's just impossible. And so there's deficiency in at least one. And so we just want to provide better service to the community and we think we can do that by targeting what some strengths are, using them for those strengths. There is a huge mentality shift between EMS and law enforcement. And we have been able to quickly identify that in the last little while. It's just different and they, they think differently and they react differently to situations. And so we think for customer service level for the island, it'd be better to use them people for, use the different people for where, what their, what their strengths are.
I just add to that, it's, it's really about a balance, right? There was a time where we were low on paramedic certified. We know, I mentioned a project longevity that we've got 17 certified paramedics on, on, in the department now. And it's now where, you know, sort of on the law enforcement side, a number of these folks that retired were sort of our long, more seasoned and experienced LEOs. And so, you know, the routine is we find a paramedic firefighter, we send them to the BLAT because that's sort of the quickest route to get them fully certified and all three. But what we have is fully certified and qualified, experienced paramedics, but not so experienced on the law enforcement side. And I think we can all agree over time as the island has evolved, there's some situations that these folks have to deal with on occasions that we, I, sometimes I am a little concerned that that they're not as seasoned as an, as an experience. So that's sort of, you know, the general theory of what we're looking to do with this assessment, right?
So 2023, we had over 2,000 incidents in public safety. We get 2001, 2023. And with that, as Chris was saying, we're getting some law enforcement type calls that unless you have that experience, that mostly you will get from the mainland side, not really know, not going to know how to handle that right off the get go. And as we're getting them, it's hard to train our people because you don't know when you're going to get them. Everybody can't go on one call and be like, I want all y'all to see this. So, all right, Karen. Our next project is our policies. And that again goes back to getting a good strong foundation for public safety. Policy manual, public safety policy manual was created in 2009 when it switched to public safety. It was revised in 2014 and the last revision we had is in 2017. I was able to find in 2014, we have currently operate off of 2017. It was very little change between the 14 and the 17. So realistically, we haven't had a policy update in 10 years and a lot has changed in 10 years. So we're going to assemble an internal policy committee and get some outside resources as well. Completely review all of the we have now, identify what we need to change, update, take out, some of it doesn't even apply anymore. And oppose the new policy making, presented there to you guys and Chris and also have our legal staff look over it, make sure we're good to go. That's going to be pretty intensive because it's been so long for them and they, and part of this policy and procedures update goes hand in hand with what's called, and it's on the next slide. The CLIA, the Northern Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation. So there's, there's, there's CLIA that a lot of people have heard about. That's the nationwide accreditation for law enforcement. North Carolina has created its own accreditation program. And so we are looking to go with that as it does not cost $20,000 a year just to be a member. It is free for North Carolina law enforcement agencies. But what they do is it's a voluntary free program designed for agencies. It demonstrates our compliance with best standards, best practices and best standards. They set forth so many standards that you have to meet to be a part of the accreditation program. And it's, it creates a much more professional agency. So you have to meet all their standards to be a, and it's made up through an assessment, onsite assessment, assessment. And part of those standards cover law, general law enforcement operations, but also use of force, training, evidence and investigation. We don't have a lot currently that deal with those. So this will give us the ability to, to meet the North Carolina level and say, we're good to go on ball hit. We, we, we meet all the standards for the state, we're, we're good to go. It also gives us something to fall back on if we have an incident maybe didn't go quite like we want. We can say, well, we were in accordance with the policy, we were in accredited, accredited agency. These policies have been checked out by the state program. And it gives us a little bit of less civil liability, like, well, I don't know how to say that, Charles, but the next slide, Karen. So it's about a 36 month process. It is not an easy process. But it is very thorough and I think it will help out the island a lot. It will make us a much more professional agency. Step one is what we're looking at doing this year, which is review the standards manual, program guide, determinative funding is needed to meet those standards. Because some of it, especially like with the evidence stuff, you have to have certain things in place structurally and procedurally. So decide, determine if funds needed, you have to complete the online application and a site visit. They come down, review everything as a general, just to see if you're even going to be in the ballpark of, of being able to be credited. One of the big reasons for this is grants are now becoming where if you're not accredited, you're not eligible for grants. Department, Department of Crime originally came from, or the police department, I was talking with their assistant chief last week. They went to put in for one of the cops grants, which was a big one for law enforcement. And they couldn't get, because they were not, they have to at least be in step one to be even be eligible for the grants now. So it's a huge reason as well that we want to do it. And our last, the last one I have for our big project for this year is a fire preparedness assessment. Chip did a, a fire preparedness assessment for middle island, Chip Sager. Which was very good, very informational and determined what, what is needed as the build out occurs. We want to take that and run with it. That's great for middle island, but we still got the whole rest of the island. So we're going to establish fire districts. When I'll tell you fire districts, JP is going to talk more about that, right JP?
Yes.
So he'll, he'll go into the district. We're, we're jumping on board with public services as far as this districting. So he'll go into that with the water side. We're just going to mimic their districts. Conduct the assessments by each district at a time. That way we can make sure we're thorough. Identify the area of concerns and hazards, we're having results, then about research, kind of trends found and present the findings and an action plan. So our goal is to, in this is to see where we stand pretty much in the fireside. Is, do we need additional specified equipment for a certain area or the island in general? Do we? So that's, and we identified a little bit of that already with the middle island assessment. Going forward, we've worked with JP on that as far as water related issues. And so that's, that's a big goal. That's, I'll take up a lot of shit this time this year.
To add to that, as an example, with middle island, you know, with the middle island fire annex station. As middle island continues to develop, it may be a point in time where we need to consider repurposing that building we have and repurposing to put a, a piece of apparatus there so that if a call comes out and it's at middle island, that our response sounds much quicker.
And that was my last little bit, which was the middle island station. Is in dire need of repair right now. Is for all effects unusable for us right now. And so we need to determine what that plan plot looks like, how much room do we actually have there? And what do we want to do as far as rebuild? And plan for not just now, but future as well. Do we want to keep it a one day or do we want to put a two day where we can eventually like Chris was saying, have somebody down there with an apparatus, we can put a fire apparatus and a water rescue apparatus. Because it's so close to 42 and have somebody there during the day, they can do a quick response to the water rescue calls. So that is another agenda for this year is to look at middle island. What do, what do we have down there? As far as land, how much land, how big a building can we put? Do we want to keep it same size? Do we want to expand? JP is going to talk about that a little bit too as well with that, that plot of land because he's going to put some, some water related things on that, on that plot as well. So that is our big goals for this year.
I really like this. I like this a lot. And I think that it will help drive appropriate resources as opposed to what people think we need for resources, if you know what I'm saying. I mean, I think that's great.
So they are very big goals. They are time consuming. That's why there's only four of them because they're, all four of those are very time consuming that we're going to have people working on. That's hopefully next year, when we come to this, we'll say, okay, we did all of our assessing, we did all of our, this is what we have the time. This is what we need.
You know, we live in a, probably a pretty unique spot as to how much the community, you know, volunteers either through, you know, the public safety auxiliary or the volunteers and that kind of stuff. Will that be part of this assessment too, looking at the effectiveness of how that group is being used or deployed? I mean, I think everybody wants help, right?
So it will be, it won't be exactly a part of this assessment because we're already doing that. W G politics already on that. So our plans are take the volunteers and organize them by specific task groups. Because we have all levels involved in our public sector volunteers. We have some people that can do more physically active stuff. We have some people that may be better suited for rehab. So we're going to start creating specific task groups within the volunteers.
Okay.
And also I've been working with Cam to do, she's already started task groups in the auxiliary, but how, we're working on a plan on how exactly that comes into play with us in a more structured environment other than just auxiliary shows up and kind of does her thing. A, a plan of, okay, at this point, when we have this type of call, we activate auxiliary. We let them know which of those task groups we need at the time versus everybody just coming in.
Yeah, just so you're aware, with the public safety volunteer, they have a chain of command within their organization. And Diana Saris is sort of the, the captain, if you will, of the public safety volunteers that reports and meets with Josh and his command staff.
Yep.
And part of the policies not only will be for, you know, public safety department, but for the public safety volunteers as well.
So they will have their own, the volunteers will actually have their own section in the policy. Applies just to them and their they will also at that point in time, fall under our general section, which is kind of all that kind of, so so we are trying to get more unified and as far as with the volunteer.
Good.
And they do have a command structure. We actually have a, there's a volunteer captain and a volunteer lieutenant. Diamond series is the captain and she does meet, when we have command staff meetings, she is involved in those.
You talked, Josh, you talked about recruitment of PSOs. How about the recruitment of volunteers going forward? It seems to me we're getting pretty lean in terms of the number. Well, there was a time we were getting pretty lean in the number of people that would be willing to go through the training, et cetera. Where do we stand on?
So currently we have 27 volunteers.
Oh, wow.
Understand with that, understand with that is part of this going forward is to put restrictions because we have 27 volunteers, but some of them we haven't seen in quite some time. So we're going to put in, not restrictions, but requirements, you have to make, meet so many calls. Obviously we don't expect them to come to everything, but so many calls, so many training days. And if they don't, then yeah. What we'd like to do is cap it off at 25. We think if we can get 25 strong volunteers, we'll be squared away. And also we're currently budgeted for 25 parking, to pay for the park. So.
The, to add to that, I, to acknowledge that out of those, there's probably three that are fully qualified to go internal. Tune out. So two of those are qual, only qualified. I mean, it, it takes a lot to get qualified. And I think there's
What is the qualification? You want to reference it. So what he's talking about is, is to go inside of a structure. You have to have what's called firefighter, well now it's just called firefighter certification, but for years it was called firefighter one and two.
Got it.
They just changed that firefighter certification just in general. It is about, if you go Monday through Friday, full time, about a three, three and a half month long process to get that. We do have two volunteers currently that have that certification. North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal just created a skills checkoff list for volunteer firefighters. That your point I think is going to knock out quite a few that are, and, and because this, this is pretty skills list now that
Are 27.
Oh, it's the same, to be a volunteer firefighter, you need to meet this standard.
Right.
So we're still trying to figure that out. It's a new thing. We're, we're trying to figure out how that works, how that applies. Is it currently mandatory or are they just talking about going to a mandatory? And what our time is on that. So that's still, we're in a very, we just got a copy of it the other day. So we're at the very beginning of looking into that.
Like, but to, to your point, Scott, I, I would recognize that while the number seems large as far as volunteers capability or abilities to support our full-time firefighting staff. That number's low and, and the question is recruiting and yeah, we've had some one in particular say, well, I know so and so is interested and then, well, that doesn't pan out because they're not willing to go through the training and to get certified. So it's, it's a dilemma that we're struggling, challenged with.
Yeah, I think, you know, to me, having known a lot of people that serve in, in volunteer fire department capacities in the past, they're, you know, they're young. It's, you know, they're out in the, on the mainland side, they're young, they're in the community, you know, they're working and when they get, you know, if they're off the clock and they get a call, they'll show up. The age group of the people out here available to serve as volunteers doesn't, to me, that's, yeah, it's tough to find or to, a, a, a number of folks that would fit that most. So I continue to struggle with, so what do we do about?
But there is a, there is a value with some, a number of them, they can do other things.
Yes. Now, how we try, yeah. So what it, based off of our findings so far, what it boils down to for us, it looks like it's going to be so you're eligible for benefits through the state by, for being a volunteer firefighter. After so many years, you actually get a check every month. There's different categories. There's a member and there's a volunteer. A member can be on the department and do things, but if they don't meet that firefighter credential, they're not labeled as a volunteer. Makes them not eligible for certain benefits. They still are eligible for the insurance involved, that if something was to happen, but not the retirement part of it. So some of these task groups, like if they can't do the skills assessment, but they can do rehab or we're probably going to re-categorize something with the state.
Yeah. So I, I get that. And I think you're, we're going to end up with a much better organization in terms of skill sets matched with the job, these jobs need to be done at various call out there. Except again, I come back to the shortcoming of the people that, how many people do we need volunteers to, we need to have prepared and trained, ready to go in and help fight a fire. That seems to be the big hole that we got to.
And that's tough because as you were saying with the age group, the physical ability and, and not just the physical ability, the, the wall to have to go through a three and a half month academy that is strenuous and carry a 40, 50 pound air pack on your back for three and a half months.
I think that's why we, we focus on our mutual aid partnerships with, like with the lighthouse landing fire. I mean, when that happened, we've got mutual aid coming from five or six municipalities, the counties converging to deep point. And Chad getting the barge running and we're getting apparatus over here.
We had just over many firefighters on the ground for last one.
Wow. How many ordered by fire? So you had, we had our six shift people.
Yeah, a lot of us come in the hall through.
Right.
And then you had Oak Island, Southport is our automatic anytime. So anytime there's, even if we it's determined that it's false, anytime a call comes out for a structured fire. If you get there and it's nothing, Southport and Oak Island are already on their way. It's an automatic mutual aid for, for structural fire calls. They're already on their way to the coast guard station to get on a boat and come over. And then we usually cancel them.
Right.
They turn around and go back. So we had those, we had one of those fire department sent crew, Leland sent their brand new engine with a full crew. And it actually came over to the island, the brand new engine came over to the island, which I thought was pretty, pretty cool with it. Their engine has been debotted. Shalote sent, I went as far down as Shalote sent personnel firefighters. So we had, it was so I'd say all of our, that part, I mean, we had a, we had a huge journey.
I guess for me, boil it down to this one question. If we can't find volunteers to fill the roles going in, what do we do?
I think, I, I think we're doing it. Even with lighthouse landing, we had three, the same three
Right.
At the time, now two, but it's been that way. This is not anything, that number's not anything new. One, like we've had 15 volunteers.
But if we lose one or two of those two.
All right. So, so, so keep in mind, even though they are trained, certified to go in, we don't utilize them at the same capacity level like, like we, we do. With six people on shift, it's a requirement that if you send two people in, it's a two people in, two people out system is what, is what we operate on both. So we have personnel to go interior. Now, is it nice to have those two that can say, we need a X, we have to bring one in? They are eligible, certified to be able to go into a burn and structure to bring us tools and stuff like that? Absolutely. But they're not.
Fight in the fire.
Right.
I get that. Okay.
Wait, wait, we don't need to, I don't think, too long, but there's a point of, that there's only so many people. I know, I know you can't say how many people you need in a fire, but I believe 50 was a lot of people, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so NFPA sets a standard for structured fires, which we meet with our automatic mutual aid is for a structured fire, a full structure fire, puts out 15 firefighters in the ground. So we have four structures involved. So while 50 sounds like a lot, by NFPA centers, we're right here with, where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, I'm glad. And so I just want to follow up Scott that all, all said doesn't mean that we're going to try to look for someone, if they're interested. We can invest in them to give them certified. We would put some funds in the budget to pay for the force to, to get them certified. If, if there's folks that are interested in doing it, but it's, that's the part is finding the person.
That's concerning. That's what I'm concerned about. I don't think, I'm concerned that we're not going to have the people willing to step up and go through the training and serve in that role. And our, where we now have two or three, we're going to be down to zero here in short order. And is that going to be okay? Well, you know, what's the, what's the alternative plan?
Ultimately, what we use Ultimately, what we use them for, yes, that will be okay. If that has.
Okay. I'm good. You're good. I'm good.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.